Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Present.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Caper.
Here.
Bill Garcia.
Present.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
I'm here.
First item on our agenda is public comment and audience participation for items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody in the audience wishes to address council? Next is approval of the minutes of our September 21st, 2021 council regular meeting. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. A draft copy of the September 21st minutes were included in your packet and are presented for your approval by resolution.
Has everybody reviewed the minutes? Any corrections? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to approve the minutes last meeting.
All second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by John Caper. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is reading of a proclamation declaring October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Whereas domestic violence affects every person in Fort Morgan, Colorado, either as a victim, survivor of, or survivor of domestic violence, or as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. And whereas recognition of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month exemplifies the commitment to serve domestic, to serving domestic violence survivors by acknowledging, invigorating, and redirecting ourselves to the goal of eliminating domestic violence. And whereas Share Inc. is working to provide quality services and assistance to domestic violence survivors responding to emergency calls and criminal justice proceedings. And whereas domestic violence programs like Share Inc. and other professionals and advocates of nonviolence have joined together to support each other in their work and to provide our citizens with safety and services. And whereas during the month of October, Share Inc. will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of family violence and increase sensitivity to victims of family violence, emphasizing the needs of citizen involvement in efforts to reduce family violence through public education and changing public attitudes. Now therefore, I, Ron Schaver, Mayor of the City of Fort Morgan, Colorado, do hereby designate October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Fort Morgan and urge the appropriate recognition thereof. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Fort Morgan to be affixed of this, the fifth day of October 2021. Would you like to say something?
Hello, I'm Joey, I'm director of Share, we just had a Sunday discussion, I'm calling on, so we kind of need some money to make sure the man in charge early and that's been a little difficult with everybody, so we're trying to get back to this here. Jessica, anybody know, any of the people who manage Share, do you just want to chat with them? Anybody?
Thank you.
Yeah.
We appreciate what you do. Next is recognition of business of the month for October. Ms. Engel.
Good evening. On October 27th, 2020, the U.S. News and World Report released its 2020, 2021 Best Nursing Home Results, naming Life Care Centers of America facilities, 91 of them, to this coveted list, including Valley View Villa in Fort Morgan, which is managed by the Tennessee company Life Care. Only 21% of U.S. nursing homes are part of this honor, and our local facility was recognized both long, for both long-term care and short-stay rehabilitation. Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to also announce that Valley View Villa has been selected as this month's Business of the Month recipient for its valuable contributions to our community. Each month, this distinction is given to a Fort Morgan business that excels in such areas as pride in their business, top-notch customer service, growth, active involvement in the area organizations and programs, and community contributions that assist in creating a better quality of life. Not only does Valley View Villa care for some of the community's most vulnerable, yet important, members of our community, their compassion extends beyond their walls. For years, they have been highly involved in such fundraisers for the Alzheimer's Association Memory Walk and the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life, and have supported several local groups, including Behind the Badge and the Fort Morgan Community Hospital Association. Recently, one of their housekeepers won Life Care Centers of America's Whatever It Takes Divisional Award for Customer Service and Unrelenting Attentiveness. The 70 employees have an incredible commitment and responsibility to not only provide care, but to serve in the capacity as family to the 40 to 70 frail elderly and disabled adults that reside at 815 Fremont Avenue. The willingness to go above and beyond in these efforts was highlighted during the unprecedented times of COVID. For an entire year, facility doors were closed to visitors and residents were isolated from the rest of the world. Many of us will never realize the depth of this kind of responsibility. As noted by Jessica Strong, Valley View Villa's executive director, the team devoted themselves to the residents, doing everything in their power to keep their spirits up, show them love, and continue to provide excellent care. I came across several examples of this, and the numerous stories of kindness and devotion will touch your heart. One of my favorites is the blessing bike. Dr. Shawn Thompson, Valley View Villa's medical director, often can be seen riding the streets in tandem with one of the facility's residents. Many of us, including myself, take our mobility for granted. This simple experience is a thrill for those who no longer are physically able to pedal a bicycle, enjoy the fresh air, and observe the beautiful outdoor parks and sites in our community. Congratulations to Jessica and her entire team. Please join me in recognizing and thanking the October Business of the Month, Valley View Villa, for their outstanding work and contributions that they have shown and continue to provide in order to make Fort Morgan a great place to live, work, and enjoy.
I'm a crier, so I'm gonna not, I'm sitting back here like, please don't cry. Thank you so much for this. It's really just the whole team at Valley View. It's an honor to work with everybody that I work with, as far as our staff and the residents that we serve, and we love to be able to get in the community and serve the community and participate in events and activities, and we look forward to continuing to do so as we move forward. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to extend, expand the footprint of a home on a B-2 zoning at 423 Circle Drive. This is a public hearing, so please keep comment, public comment to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit time, limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is improper under these guidelines and otherwise improp, inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is a legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this hearing properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on September 16th.
Next is a presentation of the application. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Had one of these in front of you not too long ago. We've got this little bit of a issue where we have some residential growth that occurred in zoning districts that aren't necessarily set up for residential, just the way our zoning code was changed back in 2010. And so, we've got another individual that has come to us and would like to just put a simple addition on the back of their house, is what this comes down to. And so, Mr. Trammell has done all the necessary paperwork with us, and you can see in my memo there, this did go to the planning commission back in September 27th and received their, their approval or recommendation to move forward. He's looking at adding a 12 by 36 addition on to the back of his house. This business zone that he's in, this B-2 zone, is a little bit different. The last one we had was down here off the railroad tracks. This one is over on the south side of the tracks. There's a strip of houses in there that got zoned B-2, and it's all houses on the block, but that's the way that it got zoned, and so that's why he's in front of you tonight. So, this special use application, as we've gone through before, there are certain criteria that he needed to meet when he presented. So, you're looking at something that's compatible with the adjacent uses, which obviously it is, since he's surrounded by other homes. His request meets all the minimum requirements and setbacks and all that. He does not change the predominant character of the neighborhood, since it's all houses. He's not overburdening any capacities of our streets or utilities or anything with this simple addition. Conforms the comprehensive plan, since he's just doing addition to housing that's obviously addressed in the comprehensive plan. And we don't have any history with this applicant. So, with that said, we've done all of the necessary referrals, all the neighbors were notified. I did have one neighbor call that was an out-of-state landlord, just asking why he'd been notified about the procedure. I explained to him what was going on. He had no comments past that. We did have one of Mr. Trammell's neighbors show up to the planning commission and actually spoke in favor of allowing him to do this, so. So, with all that, based on the review of the proposed use and applicable codes, the staff recommends approval of case 21006 SU, Special Use Permit for the Expansion of a Single Family Home at 423 Circle Drive, as was recommended by the planning commission, subject to the following, that the special use run in perpetuity with the land and that the addition be only for single-family use. And that is my presentation.
So, because it's zoned B-2, they've gotta get a special use permit in a residential area?
Correct. And we do have another one that's already come to us to run through the process, so this won't be the last one you see before the end of the year.
When people fall into this, this, so we'll have one next week? So, there'll be three this year? Like, can we waive their, what's their $200 fee for?
It's just, the, the fee is basically, it pays, we have to do the notification with the county, so we have to pay for the, the boundary search and then the mailing and, and all that. And so, there's some expenses that go into the notification part of it more than anything, and then it's just one of the set fees that we have associated with the numerous processes that go on in the planning and zoning office.
So, I know we talked about this, I think we were at the golf course last time. Are we gonna redo this, so like, people don't have to come to us and spend $200? I mean-
We have, we have started the discussion, because this, the planning commission brought it up a little bit, and we did have the discussion about, I think Mr. Trammell has talked to his neighbors about the possibility of just rezoning the entire block, and then it would eliminate the need for anybody else on that block moving forward. I've talked about it with Steve a little bit now, after the planning commission, because it was kind of a topic of discussion, and it is possible for us as the city to initiate a rezone of the neighborhood. We just wanna make sure that everybody would want to do it, because we can't create any spot zones if we would do it, but I can't imagine that anybody would. So, now that this is coming up and becoming a little more prevalent, it's probably something that we should address, or at least look at what would be necessary to just eliminate the need for them to have to do the special use. That would be the simplest thing to do.
So, say his neighbor came in who's in a B-2, they can technically B-2 his business zone, they can do anything with, falls within a B-2 without anything from the city, so like, I don't know, like, they can just open up a business as long as it falls under the B-2 standards?
Yeah, as long as they meet all the standards for B-2 zone, they could.
And there's nothing that the neighbors could do at all on that?
Correct.
Okay. Right. Thanks, Brett.
Did you say there was another, somebody else applying for one in the-
Well, we've just got another one.
Oh, sorry, another one?
We just have another one of these that'll be coming forward in a couple of weeks.
Oh, oh, not necessarily in that?
Yeah, yeah, not as part of this one, but-
I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Okay. Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant. Does the applicant wish to address council? No? If you have any comments or want to address council. Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody in the audience wishes to address this issue? There's no one wishes to speak on the issue. I'd ask city clerk if you received any oral or written comments to your office prior to this hearing.
No, Your Honor.
Council discussions. Are there any questions or discussion from council?
No. I just had that one.
I just wanted to clarify, it's gonna remain a single story? Okay. That's what it'll look like, too, if I wanna make sure. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion by council, I entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I'm moved.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. Council action. Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard the presentation of this application for a special use permit. Proper action is by resolution approving the special use permit, subject to the conditions mentioned by Mr. Nation, namely that the special use runs with the land in perpetuity, and that this isn't, this addition is for single-family use only.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution that we approve case 21-206 SU, which is a special use permit for the expansion of a single-family home at 423 Circle Drive, that was recommended by the planning commission, subject to the following, that the special use runs with the land in perpetuity, and that this addition is for single-family use only.
Second.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is a presentation on an application for historic landmark designation of the old, of the World Olivet Assembly Building. Ms. Snyder. Engel.
So, the Fort Morgan Historic Preservation Committee would like to recommend the approval and designation of the Fort Morgan First High School Building located at 300 Dual Street for a local individual landmark status. The building meets three of the historic designation criteria, including, one, it is the site of a significant historic event or original location of a historical property. The building was actually the first modern state-of-the-art high school to be built as a separate building from the lower elementary schools. The high school would house 7th through 12th grades. The high school would have an auditorium with more than 1,000 seating capacity, with a balcony and a large multipurpose stage with access to the choir and the band room. A large gymnasium with a balcony would have girls and boys' separate dressing rooms as well. The building included a modern kitchen and a full lunchroom, and was equipped with shop facilities, home economics, science lecture hall, and a well-equipped science lab. The centrally-located library and large glass showcases line the first-floor hall and display trophies and awards throughout the years. The building remained the high school for 40 years until a new high school was built in 1968. Secondly, it is recognized by historical authorities or acknowledged by local historians, the State Historical Society, the National Register of Historic Places, the Colorado State Register, or in some other type of published form. The building was visited and highly recommended by officials from the Colorado Preservation Office for both local landmarks and national historic registry. And then, thirdly, it contains elements of the architectural design, detail, materials, or craftsmanship, which represents a historic innovation. The new Fort Morgan High School was a three-story blond Colorado brick building that was popular in the U shape with a capacity of 850 students. The U-shaped building had many advantages over the old block style. The design provided an increase in the lighting system and could be enlarged with very little labor and expense. The new high school was practically fireproof in the construction. The partitions are made of a channel iron metal lathe and plaster and contain no wood. The floors are supported by steel joints overlaid with concrete slab, and the maple flooring is all that is combustible. The corridors are concrete slab covered with TMB flooring. All the ceilings are suspended from the steel joints and contain no combustible material. The building was actually modern in every way. The univent ventilating system was a positive means of bringing fresh air directly from outdoors, forcing it through a screen and steam coils in the rooms. So, again, the building sports a classical revile, revival architectural style with art deco elements, and was built in 1925 by W.M. Bowman Architects and general contractors Busboom Brothers from Fairberry, Nebraska. It is currently owned by World Olivet Assembly.
Anybody have any questions? None? I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the application for historic landmark designation, designation for the World Olivet Assembly Building.
Second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Shasso. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Just to note, I really enjoyed that picture from 1925 that showed the front of the school there and everything. That was really neat to look at that.
Was that your senior year, Doc?
What's that?
He graduated the year after.
Okay. I've got guys that are very-
I don't know. I didn't say anything.
Next is a presentation approving the application by the city's Historic Preservation Board for a grant to perform a historical survey. Ms. Snyder. Engel.
Yes. And so, I believe you have a resolution before you that we, the members of the Fort Morgan Historic Preservation Board would like for you to consider. They are planning to apply for a grant through History Colorado. If successful, the grant amount would be up to $25,000, and there is currently no match required from us as the municipality or the applicant making the, the grant. The grant would actually be used for, to perform a historic survey inventory of our, our buildings currently. The last one, I think, that we have on record is from the 1980s, and so, this would greatly enhance having that updated information on record for them.
Can you survey what exactly?
It's a historic inventory survey.
Okay.
Of the building. Yeah, of the buildings, sorry.
So, we are just the administrators of this grant?
Yes. So, we would be the administrators. They do have, we would have to, if accepted, if we received the grant, we obviously would have to abide by some of their terms. We would enter into a contract, and it's basically more paperwork is what it is, but yeah, it does not require any cash contributions from the city of Fort Morgan.
Yeah, did I read here where, yeah, it would just take some clerical, clerical work, right?
Yes, yes. In fact, the actual survey itself would be performed by a professional that has experience and the credentials to perform such a historic survey, so it wouldn't be staff time performing the, the historic survey. We would, yeah, we would hire an appropriate party with the credentials. Yeah.
So, all the city would be out of some, some time for clerical work or-
Yeah, yeah.
Time of some stuff.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution approving this written resolution supporting the grant application for an historic survey of the buildings to update the city's local resource inventory.
Second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. Next is a presentation on a resolution supporting a ballot question 2G, amending the city's charter to streamline our procurement, our practices. Mr. Glameyer.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Council, what you have in your packet tonight is a formal resolution of support for our ballot initiative, issue 2G. This is an amendment to the City of Fort Morgan Charter that would really just remove redundant, unnecessary, and certainly dated language in our charter that limits the ability to do any contract costing over $10,000 without coming before this body for approval. As you know, we spend a significant amount of time during the budget process of bringing to you various items that are certainly more than $10,000 that you see and review and understand, and then it's just sort of needless and redundant to come back, have staff come back before this body and ask for approval to purchase something of that nature. We also have checks and balances in place in the code itself that sets limits for spending and appropriations, and as those need to be adjusted, this body would adjust those limits, and I think that's more representative government and more appropriate than to tie this, hands of staff to have this in the charter. So, this resolution, if you- So this resolution, if you adopt it tonight, is a public declaration of support and asking voters to vote yes on our ballot question 2G.
So this is basically just removing one sentence from our current charter.
That's correct.
Which then gives the staff and council the opportunity to administrate through our municipal?
Through the code.
Code.
Yep, you're correct, in the finance section of the code, we set those limits as well. So this would just give a little more flexibility to staff into this body. Yes.
Steve, this, I think this would help people a little bit, $10,000, what year was this done?
Yeah, it's hard to tell. We talked a lot about that, Doug. I think it wasn't when the charter was created, but it was certainly either the late 80s or early 90s, and certainly $10,000 in the, in the, you know, mid 2000s is way different than it was in the, in the late 80s. I think we can all agree on that, so.
Yep.
Okay, and I know there's some things for me to sign that you guys wanted to put out there, which I will sign for it.
Yeah, thank you.
So I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution supporting this, the written resolution here, supporting ballot question 2G, amending the city charter to streamline procurement practices.
Second? Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all.
Next is a presentation on bids for employee benefit consulting services. Ms. Kukow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here for a presentation on the bids for the employee benefit consulting. Currently, the city uses a consultant or broker to obtain the best rates and products for employee benefits. We put this out to bid on September 1st, and it closed September 15th. We did receive a total of four bids that met the minimum requirements. After reviewing the bids, the recommendation is to stay with Hub International. We have a good long-term working relationship with them, and they have met all of our expectations. At this time, the staff is requesting counsel to approve and accept the bid from Hub International to continue broker consulting for $38,000.
What is the one that says 4.5% of the premium or build premium?
Yeah, it's not a set dollar amount, so they want 4% of the build premium, so it can fluctuate and.
Any questions?
Every three years is what it should be bid out, but it's been quite a few years since we have done it.
But they'd have to go up since last time?
Yeah, but it was minimal. They've, yeah, they've pretty been, like, pretty consistent across the board, so.
Any other questions, comments? I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to accept the bid from HUB International to continue broker consulting for $38,000.
Have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Next is the 2022 Budget Calendar. Mr. Glameyer.
Okay, just a small matter to address tonight.
How many zeros?
Yeah. We, you have an ordinance in front of you tonight dealing with the 2022 appropriation and budget. I'm not going to bore you with the details. We've been through this over months and months and months. We talked about this at the last meeting. I provided you with a copy of the proposed budget. What you have before you tonight is essentially the same document, and you can see the various funds in the ordinance and the amounts that are projected to be appropriated. Total budget, $77,007.64. Lots of projects, lots of, lots of, you know, services that we're providing. You all know that, and hopefully you've had your questions answered about all of those items as we've gone through presentations and the managers have been before you, but I think this is ready for your approval. Happy to answer questions if there were individual things that you identified when you looked through the budget at the last, between the last meeting and tonight, and certainly this ordinance will come before you again in a public hearing at the next meeting and another opportunity to field questions and/or make any adjustments that you see appropriate, but happy to answer questions if I can tonight or take comment and prepare that for next week if needed.
I will wait till next week to make a change. Does anybody have any questions, comments on the budget? Cutting out parks, defunding police?
Nope.
Reducing salaries?
Yeah. I do want to give a tremendous amount of thank you to Chris Bostren and the staff and the finance department, of course, all of the directors, all of the managers, and just this significant sheer amount of work that goes into doing this every year. And this year, a little more challenging without Treasure, and Chris and her team over there really stepped up to help a bunch. We're not finished. We're still working on some elements that'll be in the final budget, 2021 estimated, and of course, the summary sheet so that you can track the fund balances, and, you know, the FIGR Capital will clean that up and get that in there and some other things, but certainly a great work by all of the staff to put this together.
Lauren?
I'm going to bring something to your attention. I don't know if you've looked at it. From 2018 to 2019, there wasn't a budget increase. When we go to 2020, there was a 7.5% increase. 2021, we're looking at about a 10% increase. And the 2022 budget, we're looking at 11, almost 12% increase for your overall budget. No other department has grown that much. I know we've seen a lot of stuff come across from presentations by your department, and I appreciate the growth and the equipment that the guys are requesting, and I think that's officer safety, and everybody knows my background, so I'm not going to argue that part. But I would challenge you to find a pencil and, if not this year, next year. I really struggle seeing a 12% cost of a department rate increase, but we don't see that on other departments.
I do, I can explain that. If you look at, and I could break it down, how we have it, all of our expenses that we're spending actually on operations and maintenance outside of salaries, we increase about 1% per year. That's really what it is. All of those are salary increases, and FPPA, para, different, different increases that have come along the way in that way, but most of it's salary and the fact that we've added four people in that time. When Schultz was here, we added SRO, and then we added two officers in that same year, and then, of course, next year, we have another officer added into that, so four people makes that difference.
So for an FTE equivalent, it's 10% of your budget for salary.
That, that among the other part, yeah, that's pretty close, yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
The school district picks up half the SROs.
Of the SRO, yes.
Benefits and overtime, all that.
Yeah, I could certainly break that down. We have all that data, easy.
Well, I've got it, I've got a pretty good spreadsheet of what that looked like. I just, you know, when you put a bottom dollar amount to it and you see that percentage, we're not, Matt will argue with us that he'd love to have a 12%.
Well played, well played.
I can see, Brent.
And, and most of the items that you spoke of that we've come here, our capital items are not even included in that budget. That's a whole, whole separate part, and our capital items have been extremely expensive over the last couple of years with the roof and the HVAC alone this year, almost close to $300,000.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to put your focus toward that.
Sure.
Because I have to explain it as part of this council to our citizens, and, boy, I'm not going to be the one that says, "We're cutting the Blues' budget." I didn't say that, because I were one, so, but.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a valid request. So?
That's all I had, Ron.
Okay. Thanks, John. Anybody else? Just review, no action on this one? Oh, you want a first reading of the resolution?
Yep.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to approve this ordinance to adopt the 2022 budget, set the middle levy and appropriate monies to various funds of the city of Fort Morgan, and to request to schedule a public hearing for the ordinance for 10/19.
Second? Who wants that one? I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you all for that.
Next is a presentation on the 2022 Schedule of Fees. Mr. Glameyer.
Yep, okay, so here is, in your packet is a formal resolution to adopt the 2022 Schedule of Fees. We've been through this document a number of times as well. I do want to recognize comment from Councilmember Lindell at the last meeting regarding the fee on private golf carts. He and I had an opportunity to visit today about that, understanding that a little more for me, if you have a private golf cart, you pay $250 trail fee, if you will, to have that cart at the course. If you choose to store it at the course, you pay an additional $150. I think the majority of folks do store their carts up at the course. I think Ty tells me 17 out of the 22 private carts are stored there. So those folks end up paying, you know, $400 to have that cart at the golf course. If you want to get an annual one of our carts, it's $360, so I think the, the difference there, $40, is, is the concern, and the concern is, is that the private cart doesn't cost near, or doesn't cause near the damage or burden to the, to the staff, because they don't have to fill it with gas, or they don't have to maintain the tires or the seats or wash it and so on and so forth. So why, why should the private cart owner be paying more for that benefit when it doesn't cost them as much? Certainly understand that, happy to take direction on the issue. When Kevin and I chatted today, the idea of, you know, maybe reducing that fee $100 less than, than the, the public cart was, was an item that came up in conversation. I think we can, you know, massage that however you'd like. We could lower the cart trail fee some, we could lower the cart barn storage fee some, or a combination, however you would like, if, if that's what you all would like to do and choose to do. I do think the other piece that came up that I think has a lot of support is that we draw, finally draw a bright line in the sand. No more private carts. If you have a private cart now, yep, you can continue that use. When that use goes away, you don't get to, you know, somebody else doesn't get to inherit that, or we're not going to allow any new ones, and eventually this issue goes away. A lot of courses are phasing out private carts for this reason. There's just, they're hard to manage and maintain and deal with, and at the end of the day, you know, that's, we provide that cart and, and we would rather you use ours. I think there's less liability on the course as well, using our equipment versus somebody's private equipment, so I'll take further direction on that issue. I don't think there was anything else that came up about Schedule of Fees, but just wanted to open that conversation up to the body, so. And Kevin, I didn't want to speak for you, but I think I covered everything we talked about today, so.
Yeah, I think so. Like I said, I don't think it should be punitive. Also pointed out that most of the guys that have their own cart are the first ones that sign up for the annual passes and give the course most of the business and everything like that, too. So I know that Ty said it was difficult during COVID because people with private carts then got on the course when the course was closed, but hopefully that's not a situation we encounter again. So I just don't think it should be punitive to people that are the best patrons of the course and everything, but I really understand Ty's wanting to just switch over so that everybody was using our cart so that everything is consistent, but. So if you have a private cart, you're grandfathered in, if you have to replace that cart, no mas?
Yeah, I think that would be the case. I think if you have your cart, and Kevin, you can speak to this, because this was a, you know, we talked a little bit about this, but yeah, if you have a cart and, you know, it gets wrecked, or you, or you pass away, or whatever, then yeah, you, you don't get to inherit that to somebody else, or you can't replace it.
I think that speaks well to it, yeah. So is that your recommendation on reduction of that fee, or?
Yeah, if I remember right, it's like 200, what was it?
Yeah, it's on page 12 of the, the Schedule of Fees, but it's $250 for the trail fee. And then again, if you choose to store that cart at our course, if we charge another $150, whether it's gas or electric, and mind you, if it's gas, you know, you, you just put it in there, you gas it up. If it's electric, you're actually plugging it into our electricity and charging it every night.
And that's city utilities.
Yeah, I, I did ask Ty today, I said, "But for these private carts, would we have these cart storage barns?" And he said, "No." If we didn't have these private carts, we would tear down three barns. We would keep one of them because we use it for other things, but we would tear down three of these. So these cart barns exist to store private carts.
I have a question for you, Steve. Of course, none of us are on this situation, but if I live in Morgan Heights, I think that's one of the advantages of having a cart, to be able to go out of my garage and drive down to the course and play, have my clubs already on there, not drive down, try to find a parking spot, and you're basically saying that's not an option.
I'm saying it is if you have it today, but if you don't in the future, it would not be, that's just what was proposed, and, and actually, this issue came up some time ago, well before me, when we used to have, and I think we've been trying to resurrect the Golf Advisory Board, and they drew this bright line in the sand some time ago, but it's my understanding that staff just had a difficult time enforcing it. But I think if this body said, "This is the line, and this is the rule," then the staff would have a lot more support.
I, I think we have.
It's up to you. I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just saying that that's, that's what's been proposed.
I guess I want to hear the Golf Advisory Board tell me that they want to discourage people that live in Morgan Heights from not having personal carts, and if that's, I mean.
I, I think the idea was that we wanted to discourage anyone from having a private cart. We're running a business.
Yep. We went through, we went through a big change and sent a lot of people to brush. We are now bringing people back due to the course condition and the environment there, and I don't want to penalize that.
I, I can appreciate that. Like I said, I'm not arguing the point one direction or the others.
I know you said there's 17 private carts.
I understand there's 22. I understand there's 22, 17 of them stored at the course. Yep.
I think you'll get a lot of pushback if you told people, like, you're gonna take their own car out. I think if you posted it maybe in the pro shop and let them get their feedback, because that's basic, they're not watching this on YouTube right now. And they're not gonna read the times.
Yeah.
So I mean, if you put it like on there where they're actually at and they see it, I, I think you'll get more feedback than what they would like to see. But I, I feel like you get a lot of pushback from people that can't have their private carts.
I'm not saying they can't have them if they have them today.
Yeah, today, but I'm saying down the road, like.
Yeah.
Usually the people who have them buy new ones every three to five years.
Okay.
I just think there'll be pushback.
Yeah.
I have a question because I, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just, what's the, what's the difficulty of not having your own cart? And go, I, I don't do that, so I'm just asking that. What's the advantage of having your own cart?
Well, it depends on, go ahead. As, as John was saying, if you live in Morgan Heights, and that's, that's unique, where they have their own little cart, and that's an aspect I never thought of, where they have their own cart, they pull it out, they store it there. That's, that's an amenity for the people that live up there. However, policing it can be a tough decision, and then you'd have to make a cart trail fee on it. So I, you know, I was fine with it till John brought that up, and it, and it makes, but it, it makes sense, and I, I'm, I mean, that.
But the other people in town, they drive out there and rent a cart, so the, the people at the heights don't have to drive so far.
Well, I mean, they gotta climb in their car or walk down. I, I just, I understand what, what John is saying, where he's.
What about Kevin?
But, but if you want to start talking exceptions, I have a pickup and a, a trailer that I haul my lawn mowing equipment around on, so it's easy for me to pull my golf cart up on it and haul it out to the golf course, too. You know, it's something that just keeps going. What I'm proposing is a compromise for the people that are already there and already have carts, and the golf course, which does not really want any private carts on it, they would rather have all their own for it to function better, at least that's Ty's feeling and everything. I mean, he voiced that when he was a golf pro, and he still continues to feel that way about it. And so I figured that it was a good way to strike the compromise. I thought that it would really be inequitable to say, "You can't have private carts," when people have spent that much money on their cart already. I also felt that it was inequitable when people spent that much money on a cart and for them to store it and use our trail, and we don't have to buy the cart, we don't have to maintain it, we don't have to do anything else, and they still end up paying more than if somebody was using our cart and causing wear and tear. So that's where I came from with it. I don't, I don't have a dog in the fight, you know. I told Steve earlier, when I first moved to town, I had a golf cart out at the golf course and everything, and so that's probably one reason that I understand the viewpoint of guys that do own a golf cart, so.
The country club condos, the red brick ones?
The country club condos, the red brick ones, they all have a specific golf cart garage built onto them as well. I mean, I would rather keep the price as it is, even if they're paying more, to not do away with private golf carts. Maybe one day, they'll just phase them themselves out because people don't want to pay that fee, but I would be in favor of leaving as it is.
I would say, look at grandfathering, getting rid of the cart barn storage.
Yeah.
I mean, when your cart being stored at the area, we're gonna demolish them. Once they're done and out, you're not gonna replace them because we're not gonna have private cart storage there. I mean, I'm just throwing out another option, so.
Well, but, you know, one other thing that looking at is the golf course staff. Right now, with the things, things are set up, if you have a private cart, you have to provide them with a list of everybody that has, that is able to drive your cart and/or ride in your cart. And if you have your private cart and you come down and one of your buddies gets in your cart, then they're supposed to pay a fee to the pro shop for, which would be the same as half of one of our carts and everything. So like I said, I just think it creates a lot more problems and stuff like that. And so, like I said, I, I'm in favor of, you know, if you're gonna phase it out and everything like that, that you do it completely. Because I do think that just leaving it for people that live in Morgan Heights up there along there and everything like that, I think it's just gonna create more hassle for the golf course and everything, too, for people who are not citizens of Fort Morgan.
Well, it's not gonna happen overnight, so I would address this in the 2023 budget.
We'll send you a agenda when it comes up.
I'm just saying.
I, I still go back to, Brian kind of alluded to it. The people that are being affected aren't here tonight. Ty is not here tonight to explain better to us what his concerns are. I know you're his representative, but I still feel like the Golf Advisory Board needs to have, step in and say.
We don't have a Golf Advisory Board.
We did, okay.
When we did, they, they suggested that we do away with private carts, draw a bright line in the sand and do away with them. That's the last direction we got from the Golf Advisory Board when we had one.
Okay, wasn't aware of that.
Well.
Fall back.
I'd make a motion that we reduce the cart barn storage to $100 and the cart trail fee to $200.
100 and 200?
100 and 200, so it'll be $50 or $60 less than somebody that buys an annual cart use from the golf course.
I'd say 200 on the cart fee or the.
Trail fee.
Trail fee and leave the cart barn storage at 150.
I think we do have a motion on the table.
Right.
Right, so.
Isn't that what you said or?
You said 100 on the cart barn storage and 200 on the cart trail fee. Yep.
Sorry, second.
Can I have a, can I ask a question? Does by voting on this effect, phasing out, like sunsetting private carts?
No, anything good phasing out, that's just so we can approve the fees tonight.
I'll go to the second, Kevin. I'll second Kevin's motion of 100 and 200.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Same. I guess you can adjust.
Yep, we'll make that adjustment, and if you would, what we could do is you could adopt the resolution tonight with that amendment to the Schedule of Fees. Unless there were other changes that you wanted to address.
What's the appropriate way to address this, just the way he said it, it was amended?
I, I have one other question, and I didn't read through them all. Did we get it all coordinated as far as what the age limits are from department to department to department?
Yep, we did go through all of that.
Okay.
And I do want to also comment that we did get through all of the police department sections and make sure we had two-hour and three-hour parking addressed in all of the appropriate sections as well.
And what is the age limit?
Well, they're.
60, 65?
I think it's 55 for everything. Yes, 55 and up. So at Field House, the golf course, the whatever's pool, it's, it's all senior discount starts at 55.
Okay. Okay, are we, everybody good with where we're at with the Schedule of Fees? For now, till next year?
Still need to approve the schedule.
Yeah, you need to approve the resolution with the amendment as suggested.
Okay, I would entertain a resolution.
I'd offer a resolution to adopt the 2022 Schedule of Fees as amended.
I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell, a second by Brian Erdi Alice, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We'll address the other issue at a later date.
Discussion and possible action on approval for the mayor's week off.
Mayor's week off?
Oh, yeah.
Hey.
The mayor's day off for the day after Thanksgiving.
That's an awful generous outgoing gift.
Mayor finally gets a week off.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. What you have in the packet here is a, is a memo about this. This is a tradition that we have, have done since at least 2008. This is asking you all if you would provide the employees an additional holiday benefit of the day after Thanksgiving off as a paid holiday. It's not in our schedule of, of paid holidays, but it's a nice gesture, I think, in part by this body to provide that extra day off. You know, that way they can go shop, spend lots of money in Fort Morgan downtown, and boost our sales tax with all those Black Friday deals.
As a parting gift, I tried to give him a week.
So we would take direction on that, but we were requesting that you all approve that tonight.
Well, it's something that's been done for quite some time, so I would entertain a resolution.
And I would offer one to approve the mayor's day off for the day after Thanksgiving.
Second. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right, the employees, thank you very much for that.
I tried. Reports by officials and staff.
Uh, just a couple of things from me. Very excited to offer all utility customers, citizens in Fort Morgan, to come on out tomorrow and have lunch on the city. Uh, we have our annual utility barbecue tomorrow, starts at 11 o'clock, goes to 1:30. It's at the Field House this year, so don't go by the, the shops down there, but continue on down railroad and come see us at the Field House. We're all set up and ready to provide hamburgers and bratwursts and, and other items for lunch tomorrow and invite all of you out. If, if you would like, we can put you to work or you can come on out and just enjoy lunch and, and meet all the, the constituents and citizens, so, yeah. And the other thing I would just mention is we do have a candidate forum for mayoral candidates and for council candidates that are running for the various seats. Um, we're not putting this on, but we are certainly helping facilitate. It'll be in this room. Uh, next Tuesday is the mayoral candidate forum. Uh, that'll start at 6 o'clock, and so we invite the public to come out and hear from all of our candidates. You can also watch that on YouTube, and I think it's gonna be livestreamed on a Zoom link, so if you can't participate in person, you can sure watch that through those media as well. And then on Thursday, we'll have all of the other races, the other seats that are up. Uh, those candidates will be here from 6 o'clock. I think it's from 6 to 8, both of those. So that's next Tuesday for the mayor candidates and Thursday for all other candidates. Hopefully, everybody can attend that and get informed and then certainly vote. We're, we really appreciate everybody voting in this year's election, so I think that's it from me.
Okay. Anybody on council?
Your Honor, I'd like to thank you all for staining the stairway. It looks very beautiful. And all of the refinishing in the front entrance, and it'll be interesting to see the floor.
Yeah.
Prepping it for sale?
No comment.
Should go pretty high after it's all restored.
$10.
Yeah, but, there you go.
It's only sell buildings.
Okay. Anybody else? Matt, were you wanting to address council?
Two, seven.
No, okay. Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the city's accepting sealed proposals for engineering services for street and infrastructure design for three separate streets until 3:00 PM on October 12th. Sealed bids for a marked police patrol vehicle until 3:00 PM on October 26th. And sealed proposals for the design build of entrance signs for the industrial park until 3:00 PM on November 4th. Under meetings, the Planning Commission is scheduled to meet next Monday, the 11th, at 4:30 PM here at City Hall, and the next City Council regular meeting will be on October 19th at 6:00 PM here. That's all I've got.
Okay. There's nothing else to come before this council. This meeting's adjourned.